This special meeting to order today. Hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and we're looking forward to getting 2015 off to a good start here today. The first item we're going to address on the agenda will be the South Gulf Volunteer Fire Department. Is there a spokesperson for this group? David, are you gonna be the spokesperson? All right, so Mr. Turner, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, what about you, Mr. Butler?
I'm ready.
Clark, ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Clark, come on in.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I can, um, just wanted to give the commission and the public, um, if you recall back in November during your public hearings, public meetings, um, you had the South Gulf Fire Department attend. Uh, Mr. Sapp was in attendance, uh, the chief, uh, Mr. Tim, and some of the other volunteers. At that meeting it was discussed, um, some of the issues with regards to employee and personnel. Um, after that meeting, um, Ms. Manuel and myself had an opportunity to meet with some of the volunteers here at the county facility, uh, the week prior to Christmas. Um, and during that discussion in the meeting we had with them, it was very, uh, positive and productive. Uh, we discussed some of that personnel issues, um, but from that meeting, um, there was a request again from the South Gulf Volunteer Fire Department that they have an opportunity to come back before you all, that you had all indicated in November. Um, so today, um, one of the items that you have today is a product, byproduct of that November meeting, um, and Mr. Sapp has, uh, indicated and requested to speak on behalf of the Volunteer Fire Department on those various other issues that they were brought up during that meeting.
Okay. That's it? All right. David, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir.
Is Mike on? Is Mike on? Captain, let's see if he...
Yeah, I was right.
There you go. All right. Uh, give your name and all for the ladies.
Uh, I'm gonna come to that, Mr. Chairman, lady and general commissioners. Um, my name is David Sapp. Um, I'm the, currently, the chief of the South Gulf County Volunteer Fire Department. I have been the chief previously, um, and due to people moving out of the area, there was yet another gap in our roster and I had to come back as administrative chief. I'm lucky that I have also, as a chief of operations, Tim Hatcher. Uh, he's a thirty-year experienced, high-ranking career firefighter from Decatur, Georgia, and who has recently retired. He has a house on Money Bayou and he's helping out right now. Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for the opportunity to meet with you and discuss our problems and I'd like to start by giving you a little history of the department. The South Gulf Department has a checkered history and was started in the nineteen nineties operating out of the original part of what is now Station One. Mr. Yeager and Mr. Butler, I'm sure, probably much more familiar with the history than I am and the problems when it all started. I joined the department some ten years ago at a time when there were few people on the roster. We had a tanker, uh, an old open-back Seagrave pumper, and an old F-550 brush truck. As you know, since then, things have changed dramatically. We had a, we had the good financial times when we were receiving something in excess of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year from our ad valorem taxes. And I also had the good fortune to accost some major funding from local residents to assist in the development of the department, which included acquiring a new custom-built pumper, a new custom-built ladder truck, four more vehicles, and a new fire station at the north end of the Cape. Overall, out of our funds in the accumulated budget for the county and our 501(c)(3) corporation, uh, money, we spent some one point three million dollars in improving the capital equipment base of the department. We wasted nothing and all that expenditure is now on the balance sheet of Gulf County. This expenditure achieved a lot. For example, our ISO rating dropped to six, meaning that the people of, of the Cape could now enjoy lower, lower fire insurance premiums. And a rating of six for a rural fire department with a privately-owned water company is not bad. When I first joined the department in two thousand and five, none of us were certified and we only responded to about twenty calls a year, mostly fires. However, in an attempt to improve our services to the population, Shane McGuffin, who you will remember, was instrumental in training us as first responders and we started answering EMS calls. We then carried out three firefighter-one classes and eventually we got all thirty members of our roster fully certified under the Florida State Fire College. I have to tell you that, uh, to get an FF, FF1 certification at the age of sixty-five was pretty difficult. We acquired jet skis and started responding to water rescue calls. The generosity of our local friends enabled us to equip our Ferrara pump truck and buy a first responder quick response vehicle. Contribute to the cost of our Station Two, a hundred thousand dollars of the cost of Station Two was paid for by donations. More recently, the generosity of donors has paid for a brush truck, a boat, and very recently, a new jet ski. All these assets have been given to the county. During this time, the increase in the number of people visiting the area meant that the number of calls increased also. We have only been keeping records since two thousand and seven, but what I can tell you is that in two thousand and eight, we had ninety-nine calls, in two thousand and twelve, we had a hundred and thirty-seven, and in two thousand and fourteen, we had a hundred and sixty-six calls. Commissioners, you can see that the number of our pageouts is directly proportional to the increase in tourism and visitors to Gulf County, which is only to be expected. To remind you as to how the department is funded, we are part of the St. Joseph Fire Control District. This is a dependent fire control district, dependent, that is, by definition, on the county commissioners, and was set up by statute, I understand, in the nineteen fifties. At that time, the ad valorem taxes were split between the four departments in the district. White City had twenty-five percent, Highland View had twenty-five percent, the Beaches had twenty-five percent, and South Gulf County got twenty-five percent. There were very few houses on the, on the Cape and very few on Indian Pass at the time, and therefore this division was probably perfectly reasonable. Sometime, this division was changed, and I don't know when it was, but it was before my time, but right now, the division hasn't changed since then, and it's White City twenty percent, Highland View twenty percent, the Beaches thirty percent, and South Gulf County thirty percent. In addition, about five years ago, the millage was reduced from point zero 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 five of a mill to point zero 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 four of a mill, twenty percent drop. There have been many adjustments to our budgets. For example, we're now paying some twelve thousand dollars per annum towards the cost of the Gulf County Fire Coordinator, and we have faced an ever-reducing income from ad valorem taxes. Our share of those taxes for the current year two thousand and fourteen to fifteen is about eighty-eight thousand, down from the previous three hundred and thirty thousand at the height of the boom. Now I'm gonna bore you with some pretty detailed figures. Uh, we have three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five taxable parcels in our response area. We have one, no, this is approximate because I haven't actually counted them myself. We have one thousand eight hundred rooftops and increasing on a daily basis. In excess of forty miles of coastline, the total appraised value of all those properties is five hundred and sixty million dollars, and the fire tax of point zero 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 four mil is two hundred and twenty-four thousand. The fire tax raised in the Fire Control District is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, which means that our response area produces sixty-five point nine one percent, I don't think there's any surprises here, gentlemen, of, of, of the income of the Fire Control District. So you can see, on that basis, we get a shortfall of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in income. In my previous life, I was a professional accountant. However, how I became a firefighter, I have no idea, and I've always tried to be careful with money. And each year, I have tried to carry forward as much as possible. This last October, we carried forward with the county a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and this is specifically earmarked for the rebuild of our Station One at two hundred and forty Cape San Blas Road. If we can ever achieve that refurbishment, we will not have sufficient funds to carry on. To give you an example, we have just had all our vehicles served, serviced according to NFPA standards and, and the pumps tested. All has to be done on an annual basis. Our fifteen-year-old tanker had only done six thousand miles, but the tires were out of date and cracking and we had to replace them all, all ten of them, where you can imagine what that cost. We have therefore already spent out of our budget for this current year, just on servicing alone, some twenty thousand dollars. We've, uh, repairing the pumps, we've tested the ladders, and we've replaced the tires, and you can see where this money goes. Our gas costs have increased enormously due to the amount of miles driven on beach safety. Our gas costs last year were six thousand five hundred dollars, and this does not include all the gas consumed on private vehicles, which does not get reimbursed. We have a fire station at two hundred and forty Cape San Blas Road, which is the first thing that visitors see as they turn onto the Cape. It is not in good shape. We need two more bays and a new roof which is leaking. This means that the small office we have is producing mold and is definitely a health hazard. The meeting room is a disgrace even though it is formerly a voting precinct. According to your county administrator, we, that is the fire department, are also responsible for the fire hydrants on the Cape. Obviously, some of these are on private developments, but that still leaves some one hundred and forty-three hydrants which need to be replaced, serviced, greased, and painted. We do not have the manpower nor the time to do any of this. Many of them are now unserviceable. It costs us something in the region of four thousand five hundred dollars per hydrant to replace them. In early two thousand and twelve, we purchased another beach rescue vehicle. This has been used extensively for driving the beach for the safety of tourists. The sheriff often calls us to close the gates at night purely because he doesn't have a deputy who's available. This vehicle may not make it through this summer. It's completely rusty underneath. Commissioners, the purpose of us requesting this workshop for which we thank you is to ask you to help us to help you. Officially, we have thirty members on our roster. In practice, as always, it's only about six or seven of them who regularly turn up to calls. When you have a hundred and sixty-six calls a year, uh, that puts an awful lot of strain on a few people. What do we need? Well, we need more money, you've heard that before, uh, and we need more support. What we have created out there probably is a rod for our own back. We have done a good job and we've got a good reputation, and all this has been done, no additional cost to the county. And I think our reputation will be reinforced by the sheriff. I think, uh, we help his deputies all the time. I think, uh, it'll be reinforced by the EMS director, the ambulance crews, for example, which sometimes may only be two young females, always need assistance getting a two hundred and forty-pound man down the stairs to the ambulance. Every house in Cape San Blas is on pilings and that always poses, poses a problem on every call. And I think also our reputation will be reinforced by the local residents and the visitors to the area. We are proud to be such a huge part of the Gulf County economic engine, but the TDC's success is threatening our ability to serve, and just one emergency misstep could cause that engine to be severely set back, perhaps dramatically impacting the county's future success. Nobody can tell me, for example, how many people we are protecting on July fourth weekend, but let's have a go. Assuming that each house on the Cape will have, say, five people in it, that would mean nine thousand people. But however, we know that many houses are advertised as sleeping ten people, and we also know that these are expensive to rent, and in order to reduce the costs, they'll often have twenty people in them. Add into this, people coming just for the day, I believe we are protecting on July fourth weekend between fifteen and twenty thousand people. We can have five calls in one day in the middle of the season, and some of these may be life-threatening events. Commissioners, we have to keep all this going somehow. Our permanent population is either static or declining as well as aging, thus drastically reducing our volunteer pool and exacerbating our challenges. We cannot find a long-term chief, and the volunteers are getting less able or willing to respond to calls. We are therefore asking for more support from you, including more funding to do the things that are necessary to keep it going. This might, might ultimately involve, and I hate to say this, everybody, this may ultimately involve, for example, having to pay for a fire chief. We have, of course, been exploring ways to achieve this out of the existing fund resources available. Whilst people of Cape San Blas and Indian Pass are very generous in their donations, and we do raise some money from our annual butt roast, it is not sufficient to financially support the future growth of the demands of the department and, of course, cannot be relied upon. I know that there are a lot of pressures on the money collected by the bed tax and the TDC, and I know that there is always resistance because they tend to hide behind statutes and say they can't spend the money on that type of expenditure, but not even on the safety of the customers that they are bringing in. It's crazy. But the maybe way that they can help, which I would like you to consider, because of its location on the Cape, being the first thing that people see, we tend to act as ambassadors to the visitors. They'll stop by, if you can, if you go and stand there, you'll see it every day, they'll stop by and they'll ask where to eat. Where's the nearest gas station? Can they fi, have fires on the beach? What to do with a stingray sting? We're stuck on the beach, can you help? The list goes on. We do not record these good intent calls, but perhaps we should, and that would mean that our recorded call rate would increase to more than three or perhaps even four hundred in a year. As far as our rebuilding station number one is concerned, I would propose to you that rather than the TDC spending a lot of money expanding in the building they have here in town, why don't they join with us in expanding and improving our Station One? That way, they can deal with the questions that were asked daily, and they could have a welcome center right where the visitors are. I do not know yet what it's gonna cost to improve the building and to add the two bays. Kathy Construction's not yet come up with any costings, um, but we have told them that we only have a hundred thousand dollars available, which is the amount we carried forward from last year. I suspect this is not nearly enough, but if the TDC could invest, say, a hundred thousand dollars in the building to give them a major presence on the Cape and also hopefully provide a substation for the sheriff, we may have a chance to really achieve something for the future of tourism on the Cape and Indian Pass and their safety. What concerns me, Commissioners, if we don't do it and we don't get any support and assistance from you, then we will see the department will have to stop answering certain calls and the number of people on our roster will dwindle. We're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to stop doing the flag system anyway because we've got no one to do it. We probably will have to stop doing water rescues and possibly even beach safety patrols, and we may even at long stop, have to stop doing first responder calls. None of this can be to the benefit of the residents of the area and the visitors to the beach. I'm sure that visitors to the area reasonably expect full protection from the local county in terms of fire and safety protection. We are the frontline defense of your breadbasket. We cannot cope and we need help. Finally, Commissioners, on another matter, I note that there is an unclaimed reserve of some sixty thousand and forty dollars identified in the current year's budget in the St. Joseph Fire Control District. This is an amount that is not claimed by any particular department. I would like to ask you to transfer that to our department during the current year. This would go some way to help us in the short term. And that's all I have to say. Commissioners, I say it again, please help us to help you. Thank you for listening to me.
I got, thank you. David?
Thank you.
I have, Mr. Chairman. Only one question.
Sure.
Appreciate you coming up, giving us that information. Out of the one hundred and sixty-six calls that you received, how many were fire-related?
Well, I can't give you exact figures, Mr. McMillan, or I can, of course, if I go back to the station, but I would tell you, two are probably structure fires, ten are wildfires, the rest are EMS calls or beach rescue.
All right, second. I'm sure. Number one, David, thank you for, for giving us a history and, and talking about this. Uh, it has been a long history with, with fire department, both up and down, uh, and what I'll say about these gentlemen and the people that are involved with this fire department is they're committed to their community. When you talk about public servants, that's what these, these folks are. They're committed to their area of this county to respond in multiple different ways. They've grown, uh, to a problem, uh, because of their wanting to help the community. If it was just responding to fires, then we probably wouldn't be in here. But what this, what this group has done is assisted us with, with all the influx of folks that have come to our community in, in responding to, from, working with EMS, uh, they've responded, obviously, to the fires, they've responded to beach calls, they've responded to folks that have, uh, come to our community didn't realize that they could get off, offshore pretty quickly and, and, uh, so they've responded to those type of calls. They've expanded tremendously, as he said, they, they've had a hundred and sixty-seven calls. Now, I don't know what all the solutions are for how do we go from a small community, and I travel all over the state with associations of counties and all. Virtually all of your small counties are volunteer organizations that work on a shoestring budget. This department has been a little bit different because of the growth of our, our tourism and the amount of folks that come to our community and those type things. So as I've worked with them, I've tried to help them over the years, e, e, even some of the other departments have helped them. I think when we built Station Two, uh, White City kicked some funds in, uh, we, we, I had some donations that were given, uh, to help them with that, so over the years, there's been a lot of people that's tried to help. We've come to the point that they need some extra help, and I've come to the point that I can't figure out, uh, how to do that other than, uh, a couple of things, and one of those things, as David had mentioned, that we went back to trying to get our, give our taxpayers a break, we went back to four-tenths of a mil. I don't know if it's something that we need to look at during the, uh, next budget session, but it may be the point that we need to go back to the five, point five mils for the fire departments, uh, which would give them, excuse me, another twenty percent on top of that. Now that, would that be enough? I don't think so. Excuse me. I think, uh, you make a good point to look at some of the things that maybe the TDC could do. Obviously, I don't think that they could do it to, to the number that David mentioned, but I think that they would like a presence, because I've talked with the TDC director and we've talked about a presence out there. So I think maybe, there, there could be some discussions on, could, could, could we put a small building in, or, or a small office in a building and, and fund some of that with the TDC dollars? I think that's worth investigating. How to get all these things put together and figure out the best way to do it, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if we need a, a, a committee because I've run out of the ideas to do. We had, we had, David and them had talked to me about a person to help them on a daily basis, and, and we talked about ten to fifteen thousand dollars, where I thought, well, that's no big deal, I'll find that somewhere. But as we talked about it and we talked to staff and we talked about other things, that wasn't gonna work, the ten to fifteen thousand wasn't gonna work, and once you go down that slippery slope, as all small counties will tell you, they can't afford to do a paid fire system to that extent. As I've said, their good graces has, has grown them to the point that we're in this position. I wanna figure out how do we help them, uh, to continue the services that they do to the community over and beyond the fire department, uh, but I've reached a point that I need to, and I'm glad that we've had this meeting, but, uh, I need help from, from you gentlemen and the, and the ladies and the staff to figure out how do we, how do we go forward to help them the best we can to continue servicing that community, because David, David said something about a nine thousand dollar figure during the summer, you guys, I think it's closer, probably fifteen.
I agree.
Fifteen thousand folks that, that are there every day during the summer, and that's where most of your, your, your TDC taxes is collected, but at any rate, uh, I don't know all the answers, but I appreciate them coming and, and, and talking, and David will do all we can to help you. That's all I have, right?
Well, um, I also appreciate you coming in, presenting this information, and I also would, I, I think maybe we should consider having some type of a workshop with the other fire chiefs as well and working through some of these issues to, um, they may be having similar issues, and I think that would be the way to work through it, uh, for all of the fire departments, and possibly that way we could come to some changes if they're needed. But I, I think it would be beyond this meeting that we probably need some more information, but clearly, we need to address these issues. I would also like to hear from some of the fire chiefs as well. I would, I would suggest possibly a workshop on that topic.
I have, Commissioner. Uh, David, let me ask you a couple of questions. I've been in this business fifty years.
I know, yes, Chairman, yes.
All loopholes and hiding places and everything about it. It's volunteers, seventy-six percent of the fire department in the United States are volunteers.
Correct.
And, uh, you can't operate without them, and, uh, the volunteers seem like they're getting harder and harder and harder to get people volunteer, you know?
That's exactly right.
What can I mean, it's not what can I give, but what can I receive, and guess that just goes to change of time. You have two stations, and you mentioned you need two more bays. Is any of your vehicles housed outside?
Yes, yes, our, our beach rescue vehicles are parked outside, yes.
All right. Now, let me give you a little...
Sorry, sorry, ma'am, Mr. Chairman, ma'am, I have to expand on that, just, just to give you some...
Okay.
The idea of two more bays is not just to give us two more bays and, and, and carry on using the existing bays. What we would intend to do, depending on what can be done with the money, is to expand our, uh, expand our office and our meeting room, a training room, and, uh, possibly somewhere for the sheriff's boys to sit. Um, that was the idea, we were gonna use one of the existing smaller bays to expand the office into it.
All right.
So it, so it wasn't just to gain two more bays.
All right, yes. Fire to come and meet, stop that White City, I mean, keeping tabs on this new fire station that lasts them probably, we will, we'll be here, it, they building it for fifty years in the future.
That will last them fifty years.
Sure.
Our station that I'm talking about will last us another ten weeks if, if we don't do something with it, because the roof's falling, you know?
Okay. Next question, let me, uh, and I may step on some toes here, I hope not, but, uh, there's a rundown in the county, there's nine county fire departments.
Correct, yes.
I wanna give just a rundown, and I, this is apples to apples now, and this is operating expenses for fourteen, fifteen. We'll just start off, they're not in, have medical, but, uh, Stone Mill has fifteen thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, that's located up in the Tupelo. Uh, Dowkey, ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, that's up in Tupelo. We tapo, six thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars, that's their operation, in Tupelo. Albert Creek, which has its own, fourteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Overstreet, which is in, it has its own, about seventeen thousand seven hundred and ninety-one. The Beaches, which is in St. Joe Fire Control District, and Commissioner, you have three of the four, if, and if you count, uh, Queens, which is in the city, that's the, that's the only department you really have in your district, is the city. We're saying, yeah, uh, the Beaches, sixty-nine thousand and forty dollars. Albert Creek, eighteen thousand, no, Highland View, eighteen thousand nine hundred. White City, thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty, and South Gulf, eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
So your money with these other, with seven, these seven small, let's just take, uh, let's kick the Beaches out for instance, and let's just use you because that's what we're here today. Yours comes to eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty, and these other, uh, seven departments come to ninety-seven thousand, so seven more departments, just to kick one of them out and you're more than six. Any one you want to kick out, throw the number, with the exception of, uh, we tapo.
You're, you're, you're not comparing light with light, Mr. Chairman.
But I'm just, this is just the numbers I'm talking about.
If, if the commission decides that all they want us to do is to operate far calls, then I will operate within our budget.
There you go.
It's as simple as that.
All right. The next thing, I agree one hundred percent with you. The, again, I'm gonna step on some toes, but this has gotta be brought out there. You're in a situation down there with water rescue. People run out, they drive all the way down from, just say, Indiana, and run off out there in the water and they're in trouble.
Correct.
Two minutes after they hit the water, they're in trouble.
Correct.
All right, I can understand that. That is a time factor. You have so much time there, you've got to get moving. Same over the house, what time you give it, fire you gonna have. All right, but if someone down there gets a fish hook, because they're trying to catch a shark, I don't see why we gotta roll out a, a first responders. I think of this hundred and sixty-six calls, probably, how many of them were true? If you have a wreck, that's true. But just, uh, because somebody's stuck on the beach, call a wrecker service, maybe they won't get stuck on the beach.
There is, there is another aspect then.
All right, I'm, I'm over here, I'm just throwing out the names here.
I suspect you're right. I suspect there are five or ten calls in there which probably we didn't need to go to. We don't choose which calls we go to, unfortunately. That is chosen for us by dispatch, okay? They call us out, we respond, okay? And most of them are needed, uh, because you are, I mean, they're calling an ambulance, you are between twenty-five and fifty minutes from the ambulance in the good times, in the bad times, if the ambulances aren't there, it could be longer. And I'm afraid you don't know whether or not it's a, a major event or a minor event when you're on, on your way. In fact, some, sometimes you don't even know what you're going to.
All right, another, uh, and you hit the nail on the head. I live in the Weber Hitchcar area and helped form this ambulance service we had today. I was instrumental in nineteen seventy-four.
Right.
And I've seen it grow from forty years and, you know, we're now, what, forty, forty-first year now, but, uh, there's times, uh, even when I built my home, I made sure I had wide doors because I've had to turn them upside down and throw out windows and, uh, you name it, we've had to do it, drag them on the floor to get them out of some of these places, and you do need lifting, sometime you need three or four people to do that, so you, you're correct there, and you have a lot... So you're correct, and you have a lot of houses out there that are not ground level. We don't have probably two, what, two-story homes up where I live. You have a lot of them, probably the majority of them up here are there elevated. So that's a factor in there. But I want to look over this, and I'm in total agreement with Commissioner Bryan here. We need to look at some more things here. Is all your equipment paid for? Let me just have, where to be on part of this.
I have never spent $1 if I didn't have the money to pay for it.
There you go. So, let me give you an example. The Parkland, Weber Hitchcock, and I got this just a while ago, called up there, we have 30 members too, 29. We've got a vacancy, one just had to relocate, him and his family to Panama City because of, but the city Weber Hitchcock, which covers, it's the prime department for the north end of the county.
Right.
Although we've got three more, it's the prime department. $23,914, and we just had our service. And so, it's down from this, but that's what the city commissioners, the city fathers budgeted us, and we'll have money left over out of our budget.
Great.
Everything's paid for.
Yeah.
All uniforms, everything's paid.
Great.
That's what our budget for the city, and we're responsible. We are the prime department from, might say, from the industrial park, but also the Bay, east, west of Bay County, and north of Calhoun.
How many calls do you get a year?
Probably, we really don't know. One year, I had 30 in one month.
Yeah.
You know, a fire's a thing. We, last year, I think we had about, I said, think again, now I've had the fire coordinator here, he's doing, we brought him on, he's helping the city Weber too, with our numbers, at no charge to the county here. But keeps up with all our data, and our trucks, that's take a load off of you, and me, and all these others. But last year, if I recall, we had like four structure fires. I think we had but one car fire, and naturally, up there, we have a lot of brush fires.
Yes, you would.
People want to burn off, get their little garden started, and the next thing you know, here it goes. So our prime, probably, brush fires, and what we call mutual aid to Dowkey, Stone Mill, or where. And at least you can have structures, better off yard, if you have the insurance and everything. But let me just say, Commissioner, thank you for, we need to look a little more. I'm not going to make a decision right here today. I think this...
Well, I don't think, I don't, you can make a decision, Chairman, no.
I know it. That's not going to lie on Liam.
What I needed to do was to tell you what our problems were.
Well, I've been writing a note, and I'll review all of this.
And if you know anyone who'd like to be chief, then please let me know.
Maybe I can help. All right, okay. I need to recognize the Commissioner here. Yeah, just one thing. I know we've done this in the past with our smaller fire departments up there. We've actually gone out and received grant funds for fire trucks and whatever. Have we applied for that? Have we tried? Have we went that avenue, you know, to help out?
We were told to stop applying for grants, because the poorer departments in the county needed them more than we did. That's what we were told some years ago.
I think every department in the county is real good right now at this time, you know? So that's an avenue that I would suggest you look in at.
Mr. Chairman, if I may please, over here. I don't want us to lose sight of what we're trying to accomplish here. And the equipment is in, I think David will tell you this, the equipment that they have, they maintain, and they keep it in good working condition. I think where we're at is, we've got, we need to figure out, is there any way that we can continue to help this department be the department that they are today? And that servicing all of that area, which is pretty good ways from any ambulance service or anything else. We need them as first responders. Their community needs them as first responders. Their community needs them as folks that patrol the beach from time to time, that respond to people that are in distress in the waters and all those kinds of things. So I don't want to lose sight, just talking about, and I'm all for, I'm all for a workshop with everybody, and let's talk about all the needs of the different departments. This is a unique situation, and I think that it needs further discussion, and to figure out how we can continue with the services that these volunteers do for this particular community, because it is, it is much more than a fire department. So with that, I'm good with holding another workshop, and with all the fire departments, and let's see, if we can't figure out, how do we, how do we continue to help our volunteers, as David said, help us?
I'm also, yes, I'm also on board with that too, Mr. Jay. But another thing, there's several things out there that we can look at to help resolve this problem, excuse me. During our tour season, or whatever, we may can get with Houston there. We may can, we may can set up an ambulance.
Well, Mr. Commissioner...
Wait a minute, I'm talking.
I'm sorry.
Let me, okay? I listened to you for 25 minutes. Listen to me for a couple, okay?
I'm sorry, I apologize, Mr. Commissioner.
Yes, thank you. But there's ways that we can work on this, and I'm willing to work on it. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we can look at doing, you know, during the tour season, just like I said. It may be that we can set up, help set up an ambulance substation down there. There's a lot of avenues that we can look at. That's my point.
Met my answer to that, Mr. Chairman. You don't need to set up an ambulance station, Mr. Commissioner, we have it already. When we designed and built our station two at the end of the Cape, we had a small bay specifically for an ambulance. And the roof of the office building, the office part of that, is perfectly capable of being adapted into some sort of accommodation for a paramedic. So we did anticipate that when we built that building.
Step ahead. Step ahead. Okay. Commissioner, David, was that it? All right, over here.
Just one more comment. We, obviously, we need to address this issue as a board, but I would like to say that it's my opinion that you should be pursuing grants. I don't know who said that you shouldn't be pursuing them, but I'd like to hear if this board is, is in favor of them continuing to go forward and pursue grants as well. And there may be grants out there that are geared towards that water rescue aspect. I know that the state and the federal government, there's a large concern for access to the water, and there may be grants related to that. So I would like to encourage you to pursue those grants, and it's not in place of what we need to address here.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think all of our volunteer fire departments need to pursue grants, but they need to do it through the grants department, so with a coordinated effort that goes through our grants department, so we know what grants we're applying for through what department. So I don't think anybody wants you to quit going after grants. I think David wants you to work in conjunction with the county staff with doing that, so...
Yes, yes. Mr. Chairman, we seem to be concentrating on money. Money is not our only problem. It is also finding a chief, finding people to work with us, finding people to go on the roster. We're struggling, and we're struggling with a number of calls that we have. We have more calls than the rest of the county put together.
Or EMS calls.
Well, there would be EMS calls, I'm just, the majority of them, yes, absolutely, yes. Oh, fire calls. If it was just fire, it'd be simple, I can cope.
And that's something that we as a board will obviously discuss during the workshops, is what needs are actually there. And I think, right now, the need is actually there for you to be first responders. I don't know, I don't know that it's first responders to every call, but I think that there needs to be a criteria set. But that's something we can talk about in a workshop. But I'm all for setting a workshop to try to help improve this, and help them continue to help us.
Good deal. That's it. Okay? You fine? Are you fine? You good, Commissioner? You good?
Yes, I appreciate you coming, sitting behind you, pouring you 100% on. But like Commissioner Bryan said, we need to get some workshops, so we can figure out how we can get some funding to help y'all get the job done. Because if I get hurt out there, I want you to be there first. I don't want you to wait 50 minutes for the ambulance. I want you to be there first, so you can help me, so...
Exactly right.
Hopefully, we can get the things, get something done.
All right, David? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
We'll set all these dates up and notify.
And with the follow-up to that, Mr. Chairman, you'll take, you'll take the lead on setting the workshop, okay?
We'll do.
All right.
Next, on our, here's the heat for nourishment.
Mr. Chairman, the second item today is the Beach Nourishment MSTU resolution. Back in November and December, again, this commission discussed beach nourishment. There's been a couple of active discussions amongst your civic organizations, most notably the CCA, and Dr. Pat Hardman. As you approach the end of this year, calendar year under the statute, you had an opportunity or an option available to you all under the statute to pass a resolution and move forward with advertising. For consecutive weeks, your intent to consider through a public hearing, the adoption of a special taxing unit. And we've discussed it over the last few years. A year and a half ago, you all adopted some resolutions, opening the door for the next calendar year, the opportunity to implement these taxing units. The other alternative under the statute is with the cooperation and acknowledgement from your tax collector and your tax assessor, that you have until March 1st in the new calendar year of 2015 to do that. We sent a notice to your collector and your assessor prior to the end of the calendar year. We received correspondence back from them acknowledging this special meeting that you'll have today. The purpose of the meeting today is going to be, from the administrative staff, to ask you all, is it your wish and intent for us to advertise for consecutive weeks? A notice of intent to have a public hearing for you to consider a taxing unit in Gulf County for beach nourishment. We have several speakers today to come up and offer some public comment, and some various presentations to you all, and some data. Before the staff obviously proposes that question to you all, is that you can take a formal action. Today's not a workshop, it's a special meeting, so that you can take that action, it can be recorded, and we can move forward accordingly. In preparation for today's meeting, and we also had an opportunity, the administrator and I, and they happened, we tried to schedule it the same day, your Restore consultants were here with us today. They came from various parts throughout the state to meet with Mr. Butler and myself as we move forward and start planning your Restore meetings for the coming year. Dewberry and their team were with us. And what I wanted to do, one of the projects the county submitted under Restore is beach nourishment. So it's appropriate, it's under the agenda, and it's timely, that I wanted to first hopefully have an opportunity to introduce them to the commission and to the public, have them come up if they want to offer any initial comments. And then what we'll do is, after they have an opportunity to introduce themselves, is we'll go into the actual presentation and the public comment with regards to beach nourishment, before the commission ideally offers their comments on MSTU. We have the Vice President Dewberry, Mr. Brian Griffith. We have a Senior Associate and a Professional Engineer, Mr. Michael Hansen. We have another Professional Engineer and our Project Manager, Ms. Cheryl Ulrich. And then we also have an Environmental Consultant with the Dewberry team, Rick Carter, that have all come from throughout the state. Some of them drove or traveled six or seven miles to be with us today. We had a very productive meeting with the administrator and myself.
Six or seven miles, did you say?
Miles. Actually, I've been driving six or seven hours today, and so have they, so I apologize. Been a long time.
All been busy today.
But again, if they can come up, introduce themselves to the commission and to the public, and we're excited about having them here and getting to work with them this year.
All right, Brian? Michael? Come on in.
Commissioner's Chairman, on behalf of Dewberry, I just want to tell you that it's a privilege to get the opportunity to help administer this contract effort for you. Our background, I think you will find, will fit very well in Gulf County, both, I mean, when I say both, in the environmental, economic, infrastructure, social side of the equation that you'll be addressing over the next period of time, leading up to the actual full implementation of Restore. We have a lot of work to do together. We couldn't think of anywhere we'd like to do that more than with this county. The previous presentation was very enlightening. I know that beach nourishment project workshop will be equally enlightening, because everywhere we work, a county is a whole system, and a system of systems. And you have the most unique opportunity, I can honestly tell you that. You have the most unique opportunity for you with the Restore program initiative to, truly, the five of you, without a doubt, to leave the most lasting legacy opportunity that you'll ever have. It's our job as your consultants to make sure that we help you navigate that perfectly, and highly effectively, and that you wind up with the highest return on investment that you could possibly get from it. So I want to, again, introduce myself. I'm Brian Griffith, I'm the VP, mentioned earlier. Your Program Manager and Project Manager would be Cheryl Ulrich. Cheryl brings a vast amount of expertise and experience in restoration. Mike Hansen, who's actually current Project Manager in Escambia County for Restore, brings an enlightened level of rapidly developing program implementation structure with a project that's a little bit ahead of you, that will benefit you greatly. And then Rick Carter from Ecology and Environment. So the opportunity to be before you and your citizens this evening is really opportune, because these will be primarily the faces, but not the only faces, that you'll see from the company. And we're just truly anxious to get underway with, before you, to address your most challenging opportunities here.
Sure, just a moment. Big your environment, Cheryl, your restoration, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're anxious for y'all to get started, too. We've seemed like we've waited a long time, we've talked a long time about Restore. And as you'll hear in our next discussion about beach nourishment, timing's going to be an issue for us. And I know that this is brand new to everybody, and y'all have been working for Escambia County, I understand, for a pretty good long while. But do you see the process of writing the multi-year implementation plan as a long year, year-long process, or do you see that process? We're not going to hold you to, if you say six months and this nine months, but what kind of long process is that before you have that plan to be submitted for projects to Restore?
Commissioner Agarwal, answer your question as honestly and candidly as you offered it, okay? If any county in the Restore framework chose to do nothing more than to expense the funds that it had given to it, it would be a very short planning horizon. Some of them could probably do it with exactly what they have. If the opportunity that's before you is really recognized as you're going to anchor the next two decades worth of opportunities and implementation that go far beyond Restore, it's going to take a little bit longer. So in the direct answer to your question, I would offer you, in a very observed fashion in this particular regard, considering we get started today, essentially, that you would be looking, and you're talking about not holding, too. We have a, we have a, we have a round robin to do with your administration and staff, but I would honestly tell you that we want you to be as early to the Cape as possible, but highly effective in that. And I would honestly tell you, that's about a one-year period of time.
Fair enough. All right. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Wilma? Safe trip home.
Thank you.
We're going to stay and listen to your beach nourishment.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, as I indicated earlier, this discussion has been brought up before this commission. I know there's, each of you commissioners have been working individually with constituents in your communities regarding this. Last year, there was actually four MSTU, MSBU resolutions that you all passed. This year, under the statute, with the acknowledgement from the collector and the assessor, you have the opportunity. A public notice has been prepared, a resolution has been drafted, and I will read them to you later on in the meeting, and offer them for your consideration. I don't know if Commissioner Yeager, if you wanted to introduce Dr. Hardman, or offer any initial comments for the public to all come up and make their presentation as you move forward.
Dr. Pat, as you come, I do want to give a little introduction of where we're at with this. We've talked about the next maintenance of this project for the last, I don't know, year, year or so, just in talking with the TDC, and mentioning up here, and talking with staff, and talking with the residents down there. So we've been in discussion for a long time, and we've come to the point, most of these restoration projects, once you do them, every seven to 10 years, depending on storms, you have to do a maintenance project. And we are, we are on the cusp of needing that maintenance project done. So I think what we're here today, our goal here today is, and we've got Michael Dombrowski here, our Coastal Engineer, I think Michael's, yeah, Michael's here, so Michael will come up and give you a little presentation. But I think what we're here today is to go through, make sure we go through the necessary steps prior to having to put on a ballot, whether it be a mail ballot, or whether it be... Blas that we did before, and that's for them to vote whether to tax themselves again to do this next project. It's a project that we've got to figure out how to fund, and I'm looking at alternative sources of revenue, I'm looking at a lot of different things. Obviously, Restore is one of the things that we're looking at, the Restore dollars. So, with that, Pat, if you'd like to come up and start the process up, or either Mike, either one of you first.
Let me, okay, just a moment, let me see. Who, Dr. Hardman, who do you have that's going to make a presentation? You and Michael.
The folks here may have public comments.
Okay, we'll go to that, don't worry about that, but we will. How you doing?
How you doing, Commissioner?
Got all the answers for us?
Yes, sir, I hope so. Thank you for having me today.
All right, go ahead, you have the call.
My name is Mike Dombrowski with MRD Associates, it's always a pleasure to be here. What I would like to do is give you just a brief overview of where we are in terms of the technical aspects of the cave. Now, I know the four of you have probably heard me more than once, probably more than you'd like to, except for Commissioner Quinn, this is all going to be new to you, but I hope I can portray what kind of condition the cave is in. We were, started this whole process in 2005, where we did the design, the permitting, all the sand source, all the studies that was necessary to bring forward a beach restoration project. As y'all were aware, back in 2004, 2005, we got hit by a number of hurricanes. There was houses that were starting to fall into the Gulf, there was a lot of damage. The county pursued this project, not only with county staff, but also through a beach advisory committee that was set up by the commission to basically guide us in this development of the plan. Because after all, it was their plan, we just helped them implement it and give them guidance in terms of the best quality that they can have. Through that BAC, they decided to fund the project, because there is a local share that was required through the Department of Environmental Protection. The Department of Environmental Protection, through some criteria, dealing with beach access and parking, would contribute up to 35% of the cost of the project, which was through state funds. The other 65% had to come through the local government. It was decided that an MSTU would be formed to provide that local share. The landowners out on the cave taxed themselves, they voted to it, and it was roughly about, I think it was around $15 million, that was the local share. And that did sunset about two years ago. Basically, that it was a $22 million project. It started in early 2008, it was completed just in January of 2009, and we're here six years later. And when we initially conducted all the studies and the investigation, we had predicted that the beach restoration would last between six and eight years. And here we are in year number six. Where the most critical areas are, is down by the stump hole, that first mile or so. There's some other isolated areas, like at the barrier dunes have some issues that come and go. But also at Cape Shoals, has also been experiencing a high rate of erosion. Unfortunately, as Commissioner Yeager had mentioned, is that beach restoration, it's not permanent. It's just a way of translating that shoreline further seaward to give you that storm protection and the recreational benefits. You have to come back in, it's just like any type of infrastructure that you construct, you design it, you build it, you have to maintain it. We're in the maintenance phase now. Due to some of the storms that we've had over the years, the southern end is in a very critical state. Matter of fact, that the first probably 3,000, 4,000 feet north of stump hole is in a condition of where it was back in 2007. It's lost that amount of sand, which we had predicted back in 2005. Where we are now, especially at that southern end, is if the storm activity that continues, that we've experienced over the last year or two continues, is that a lot of those homes, those structures, and the road, because that is the only hurricane evacuation route on the cave, is going to become vulnerable to erosion and storm-related damage. So we have roughly about less than two years before ponds start getting undermined, due to wave and storm activity. We have, we started a process of looking at structural alternatives, which we've presented to you over the last year or so, but we've kind of changed the approach in discussing with Commissioner Yeager and the landowners, some of the landowners out on the cave, is that the phased approach is looking at first constructing a beach restoration with sand-only project, in order to give us back those recreational benefits, and also provide that storm benefit that beach restoration provides. And then, at the same time, we will be pursuing those coastal structures. One of the things that we were required to do is that we sent in scope to work to DEP to review them, because they are a partner in this process, that would address the design, the permitting, the sand source that is needed, to bring sand from the Gulf of Mexico up on the beaches. We don't have enough sand within the existing borrow areas to supply what we project is going to be the need for the beach restoration, or the re-nourishment of the beaches in the next year, the year and a half. Matter of fact, Mr. Butler should be receiving those approvals by the close of business today or tomorrow from DEP, so that we can go forward with the design permitting and geotechnical. Looking at the timeframes, like I had mentioned, is that we are critical within the next two years, is that with this project approach of doing the design, the engineering, the geotechnical investigation, that we would be in a position to apply for DEP grant money again, at that 35% rate, within, in August of 2016, which then would be ranked by DEP staff, we've always been in the top 10% on all the applications that we've provided to DEP. And I've talked, and we will always meet with DEP on not only this project, but other ones, and they do not envision any issues with this project, especially with the kind of condition that the beaches are in. That would give us money through DEP, starting in July of 2016, which is basically a year and a half from now, which is right at that critical point where, depending upon storm events, that structures will become vulnerable to storm and erosion to, in this next year and a half to two years. As Commissioner Yeager had mentioned, is that we're not only looking at the MSTU, we're looking at a number of other different sources of funding. So it's not only just the MSTU, it's not only just DEP's money, what I would say is that the group that we've been involved in up until this point is, they're coming up with ideas every week, how about this, how about that? And so that we would be pursuing those in order to reduce the costs of this project. One of the things is that after we constructed the beach restoration project, then it would be approximately about a six-month project to construct from start to finish. By the time that we are done in constructing the beach only, we would then have the permits and the design of the coastal structures to start constructing those, which would be, basically would be within the timeframe. The reason that we're not doing the two at the same time is just challenges that occur by having coastal structures included in beach restoration. Not that it's not doable, it's just it takes a longer period of time to permit coastal structures. And what we're looking and going back into the timeframes and backtracking from there, we felt if we go pursue the beach restoration first, get the permits, then modify those permits, we would still meet the same deadlines and timeframe that we had presented to you some time ago. So, that's what I have for you, and of course, open to any questions or comments that you all have.
Okay. Don't go anywhere.
I won't, sir.
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, you have the call.
Number one, thank you for coming, you know, and we appreciate what you do, but I want to lay my side out, what I think with my experience on the river system and erosion. I'm no engineer, you're, you know, you're the whatever. But is it, what I've seen in the past, if you, if we haul sand in, like what we hauled down there six, seven years ago, is it not true that most of that sand is drifted down and around on the point of Cape San Blas?
And you're exactly right, and you may not be an engineer, sir, but I certainly respect your observations, and you're exactly right.
I know that from experience, and here's what I'm going to say to you. I think that we're going to hurt ourselves years down the road, we're trying to build a port with our channel, we have a channel that comes up through there. The more sand we haul, haul in there, the more sand is going to drift around the point and slowly blow our bay off. Now, with that being said, I want to go back to let nature take its course. Stump hole area, nature wants to cut a channel in there. That's what nature wants to do, is proving it time and time. I mean, we have spent millions and millions of dollars to save it. If that channel were cut, in my eyes, fully like nature wants it to, then nature will rebuild the cave, we won't have to do that. And I fully believe that, because if you look at Indian Pass, we have a cut down there at Indian Pass, that's just east, whatever. We have a cut at West Pass, we have a cut at Sox Pass down there. We don't have any, very little erosion, St. George Island, St. Vincent Island, Indian Pass, very little erosion. So nature is wanting to cut that stump hole area for a reason. And maybe we need to look at building a bridge, instead of hauling more sand down there. That's my opinion, I'm no engineer, that's the way I feel.
I certainly appreciate your input.
I mean, could I, Mike, the old saying, Almighty, I'll give you, but Mother Nature, she's cold-hearted at times. And as a young, in high school, a lot of people out here, some may, but the gentleman here, Mr. Red Gun, and his, back when I was in high school, got an old Jeep, and we would go over there, and apart of that, Mr. Fred Maddock, I wish Captain Dave was here, he could really give you a lot of history on that. Captain Dave had some, I mean, Mr. Fred had some old wild cows, that was about all of us over there, mosquitoes and you name it. We would go over there on his Jeep, and at times, it was like a river, we couldn't go. And you go back two minutes later, and it just healed itself up, we could drive on over there as far as we wanted to go. Down in, to the left of it, you could drive, I drove my car out on a point there, and we'd fish. Now then, it's out in the water. Same thing is happening up in the north end of the county. I don't know if the people know that, we've got a paved road up there, County Road, it's going to be gone. Erosion, slowly eating, because the river wants to go in that direction. Now, we went to DEP, went to the Corps, we went to everybody, and they kind of more or less says, we really don't care where it goes, you know, we want to try to save. Guess what, we're down to one lane up there now. I first come on the board, it was about four feet from the bank up. They let us put banisters up, now then, poles on the banisters that we put up, less than four years ago, are just hanging in there, because nature, wait now, years down the road, it may cut and go back the other way. My question to you is this, Commissioner McComol, I've seen it there where you could not cross that, back young. Hauling the sand down there, I'm again, I watch these shoreline, I especially watch the river, how it moves. I've seen a tree fall in at the upper end of the sandbar, and it just start building, but it had something. Putting sand on that beach, how much damage did we have last night? Now, the news kept saying we were going to have some high winds come in, and I thought about it, I said, oh man, we're probably going to lose some more down there tonight from this wind we had last night. But putting the sand on the beach like we did before, like dropping a quarter in the slot machine, goodbye, gone. How, as an engineer, how can we get Mother Nature, how can we help her to try to help correct herself? Mr. McComol said, maybe it blow through, it flush the bay out, scots may come back. I mean, I didn't understand why they didn't build a bridge down there fifty years ago, but they didn't, they didn't. But is there a structure, is there any way that we can work, instead of trying to harm her, how can we get her to repair herself? How can we get Mother Nature to repair? And I know you've got some suggestions, but I just wanted you to throw out where you know how I'm thinking, I'm going right over here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, I'll let Mike answer that question. I hear, look, Mother Nature is, she's going to do what she wants to do for the most of the time. There are instances that man has intervened in a number of different ways, where we may have even caused some of the problems. And so we have to intervene sometimes to try to correct that from time to time. Michael is working on some structures that he's mentioned to you. DEP's very interested in that, they would love to see how they perform, and I think US Fish and Wildlife would love to see how they would perform in this situation. All across the nation, and in Florida especially, you have nourishment projects that have been begun for the last, Michael, 30 years, 40 years, that they maintain. And it's been a cycle that has worked well in the majority of places. I don't know of any place where they have, once they have, once they have started a program, that they've just abandoned it. In all areas, you continue to do maintenance on that program. Now, Michael's going to try to figure out how to, how to slow down that erosion rate, maybe stop the erosion rate, and I think that's something that we need to look at. I've already, in this board, we approved asking the state legislature for $4 million for DEP to help us with these, design these structures, and see if we can't do something with that. We'll see how that goes, I don't know, I don't know if the legislature will fund that, but I want Michael to talk a little bit about the structures, and how they have worked in other places, and how they may work.
Okay. Well, what I'm concerned about, and I've seen this happen up on the river, back when they used to dredge the river, you pump the sand out, dig it out of the channel, and you put the sand out there, it's going downstream, it's going somewhere else. And that's the same issue that we have out here, when we put the sand out on the edge of the waters or the bank out there, you made it yourself, and I know personally, because I've worked out there, the sand is going around to the point. So eventually, one day, that's going to catch up with us and come back to bite us, one day.
Mike, Commissioner Yeager hit on a point. US Corps of Engineers, a few familiar with this area, mighty Mississippi, it's wanting to go to the Chapel Isle River, or, works around, just about around the clock, year round, she slowly wants to go out at Morgan City, instead of it dumping out down in New Orleans, it wants to go out to the Chapel Isle Basin. So, Commissioner Yeager's right, without maintenance, you know, this building right here, if we don't do the maintenance on it, a lot of them, we got to come up with something that, I don't mind spending money, but I hate to just, like say, drop it, the slot machine gets gone, I don't like throw my money away, I had to find what I come.
Yeah. Go ahead. You have any more?
Yeah.
And I'm going to go to the other commissioners here.
Yeah, would you? Okay. I agree with y'all, I mean, there's nothing, hate to say the word depressing, but it's when you put a lot of time, effort into a project of this, and you see the sand go away, we don't like to see it. The issue that you have is, is you're right, you can't fight Mother Nature, all we're really doing is that we're translating that beach further seaward, we're, in a sense, putting a, that's like, your chairman, you can do that. Is that what you're doing is you're giving more time. You're giving more time to the upland structures that have been built. There's also an issue of short-time versus long-term solutions. The sand is a short-term solution. We're looking at, as with this project, is between six and eight years. Is that beach restoration does that, it keeps on putting sand out there, and it keeps on putting the Band-Aid on, in order to give you more time before those structures are vulnerable to storm events. The, and really, what's the alternative? The alternative is, they do it in North Carolina, they take those structures and they move them, or they don't allow them to rebuild. Their tax base gets, is impacted by that. You could start putting up coastal them, or they don't allow them to rebuild. Uh, their tax base gets, uh, um, is, is impacted by that. Uh, you could start putting up coastal structures such as seawalls, revetments, um, and then you get the neutralization of your shoreline. Um, one of the things that, you know, we are doing and have been meeting with DEP are those structures that does just what you had suggested, is to reduce the erosion rate in certain areas so that you get more longevity out of that sand. One of the things that we are dealing with, and Gulf County is dealing with, is that that segment of shoreline is the highest eroding shoreline as a developed shoreline within the state of Florida. When you're looking at ten, twelve, fifteen feet of erosion per year, there's no other place in the state of Florida that I'm, I'm aware of that has structures. So, it is a very highly eroding shoreline. The one thing is, is that, but you, and, and that's a short segment, that's just that, and, and I don't mean to belittle it by any means, but it is that one mile segment on the southern end. The rest of the project is actually doing very well. It's, it's actually performing better than what we had projected back in 2005, because as Commissioner Mclemore had mentioned, is that that sand is moving to the north. It, whatever is eroded is being replenished by that sand that's being placed on the south. So, it is our job to look at those structures, to construct, design and construct them, so that it reduces the erosion rate, so that that sand does stay there at a longer period of time, without having an adverse impact to those updrift or downdrift beaches, so that those folks in more to the north aren't adversely affected by them. So, it's this fine balance that you have to, you know, work with, is that you have a certain amount of, you allow a certain amount of sand, the porosity, go through those structures, by still retaining that sand within it, but not affecting your neighbor. So, those are things that we're working on now and working with DEP and addressing. But, yeah, as, as an engineer, it is, it's, it's concerning when you, you build something and it does go by the wayside. But you keep on looking at, over time, I, I've been a coastal engineer for almost thirty years now, and that I have come across dozens, if not, um, tens of dozens, different types of alternatives, alternative kind of structures, peck briefs, um, erosion discs, um, uh, all these different types of methods that people think is going to work. The only thing that's different about some of these different types of structures is what they're made out of and how they configure them. The physics is all the same. Waves come in, currents come in, they erode the beach, they take the sand away, they transport it someplace else. What our job is, is to look at what the best way of designing and what type of structure that we design in order to get you the biggest bang for your buck. So, it's not a new problem, it's been going on for hundreds of years. Matter of fact, there are coastal structures in, in the Mediterranean that are well over a thousand to two thousand years old, cause they had an erosion problem. Um, the, you know, again, the only thing that we can do is give you the, the best sand, get, find the best sand to put on the beach that it stays there the longest, um, look at these coastal structures to reduce or attempt, or try to reduce the erosion rate as much as we can, feasibly possible, without affecting your neighbors, and seeing what, and what adjustments we need to make over time. Uh, as I said in the beginning, beaches, unfortunately, as an engineer, I look at it as infrastructure. It's kinda, sometimes I go to the beach, and I don't like going to the beach because I look at things eroding. Sometimes it takes kind of the pleasure away from it. But what happens is, is that you start looking at these, these different options, and you're able to come up with something that will work for you, and that's where we are right now.
Chairman, might I say one other thing, and I'll, we'll, we'll move on. Uh, I, I mentioned alternative sources of revenue and other things, and other interest. Uh, as far as, you mentioned a bridge, one of the things that the Florida DOT does not wanna do is to spend sixty million dollars to build a bridge, to have access to the state park and have access for all of our good folks that live out there. They're, they're interested, very interested in how we protect that particular area too. And, and Michael mentioned it's the highest erosion rate, yet that southern end is, from the stumpole especially down out. But, uh, DOT is, is interested in this project. I've already contacted them and told them what we're looking at, what we're trying to fund, and those type of things. They're looking for money now also, because they've already spent several million dollars, you mentioned the rocks, protecting that roadway. They need to, they need to continue to protect that, and one of the ways that they're doing it, obviously, is a nourishment project, project with some structures out there, so they're very interested. There's, there's, we just can't allow the road to go away just and then spend sixty million dollars on a, on a, on a bridge. But I understand where you're coming from, but I, I...
I, I just think that's the only thing that's gonna work, in the long run.
And, and you're exactly right. I mean, DOT did look at that, I think it was like five years ago, and the price at the time was sixty to eighty million dollars, and that was five years. Uh, one of the other problems, it's going across a, an aquatic preserve, and the environmental issues that they were discussing with the different permitting agencies, they were talking about permitting just taking five to ten years at a minimum to even see if it was feasible to do that.
Mike, I'll recognize the other commissioners, but here's the part I want to, let me bring this back up. We've been, I've been on the board, and starting in my fifth year, we've worked, been to Washington, and all the way, way around the world, you might say, and back again, and we get a lot of promises, you know, I'm the old saying, I wanna, where's the beef in the burger? Somebody needs to step up. It's not Dr. Hardman, it's not these people that live out there that they, uh, have to, they may have to hand you up some. Where's our state at? Yes, they're putting rocks on there. Where's our federal government at? All people tell you right quick, look, federal government ought to be helping in here. And again, maybe near there, and I see, uh, big back here, environmentalists, I'm staying good with him. I've seen good, he's environmentalist. Anyway, uh, but anyway, we've got to have some help out there, you know, we talk about these things, talk about, but which is the best? How we gonna get this bang for our buck here? Oh, we're gonna lose some more. Now, as you've mentioned, further down, they're gaining some beach, are they not?
Yes, sir.
Not all that. Those that's gaining might say, well, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't have issues, so I'm not worried about, I'm just using you, Dr. Hardman, cause we do a lot of battles, so don't run into that when you start trying to dig into people's individual pocket, digging into people's pocketbooks. They don't matter, like here, what is it, thirty-five, sixty-five? Gotta look at, gotta have some house. Only what, hundred, yeah, we have a lot of people down, residents on that, what we got, three hundred residents, Dr. Hardman.
Sir?
What we have, about three hundred residents that live on the, uh, full-time residents.
Full-time residents, probably on the Cape, around that.
Yeah, three hundred, that's just...
Full-time.
That's a big burden to put on.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryan, do you have, uh, do you have anything we might have? Commissioner Quinn, is anyone else? Uh, Michael, do you have anything else that you, uh, maybe we've got you good? Anything else you'd like to add to it?
No, sir, as always, I'm always available.
All right, well, it's always good to see you.
Like one.
Thank you for coming down, and we're gonna, you're gonna yield over to Dr. Hardman here. Dr. Hardman, you out there, for.
We've done, thank you. Uh, Warren and, and committee have, have been working on this for a pretty long time, and then we really kicked it up, whatever we had to beat in August, and we got the timelines that we're talking about. Um, I've got some information that I sent out, if I may approach.
Sure.
This is just what we sent out to our members.
To your members, I'll be associated.
Dr. Hardman, have one for the...
Yes.
Probably more information than you want.
Thank you.
A little bit of history and what's going on. Here's, here's where we really are, we're up against timeframe. Uh, we have March first to have something in place with an MSTU, if we're going, if you're going to do that. Now, why would we need to have that by March first? In order to get into the DEP budget for 2016, we have to have in place a plan and how some of this, how this funding is going to be paid for, and how the bond is going to be done by June, or we miss an entire another cycle for DEP money. We've got less than two years, we're gonna have to do a lot of praying, just if we can make everything work and get into the 2016 cycle. Now, what happens if we don't, if you don't do anything? You say, hey, this is too much trouble. There is no beach restoration that doesn't have to be redone. There isn't any. Mother Nature is gonna take it. You're giving Mother Nature something to take. If it doesn't take the sand, it takes the structures, those called homes, okay? If the structures fall, everyone in this county is affected by it, financially, not just homeowners, not just they lose their home, but every single person in the county has a vested interest in saving the structures on the Cape. This isn't a place where, maybe if we get to pour it in there, we can get, get some money coming in, the Cape and the rest, and the tourists and the building and the construction are our funding sources of the county. If we don't do anything within that two-year period, we looked at the logical where the houses were going to fall, and I worked with Mitch on this in terms of trying to look at where we are based on the nineteen, uh, new 2014 numbers that y'all had in your budget, that the taxes and what have you. The probability of, of a loss could range, quite honestly, up to seventy-one million if you wait more than two years. But we're talking about realistically, you will lose forty million dollars in tax structure, in assessed value for the county. That will equate to approximately six hundred thousand dollars annually. Now, to stay at the same amount of your budget that has been budgeted for this year, it would mean that the millage rate will have to be matched out at your ten mills, and you'll have no place else to go to get more money. So, that's what happens if they fall in. Your county will lose, your school board loses, your fire loses, and that's on the first round. TDC loses fifty to sixty percent of their income. Technically, they're out of business. Rentals, the single largest probably in money flow that's coming into the county right now, will drop significantly, and therefore, all businesses in the county that depend on the rentals, the tourists, will be negatively affected. Your construction business pretty well comes to an end on the Cape, which is where most of our construction in the county is. When you lose the structure, you also lose the land. When you lose the land, there's nothing to put more structures on. So, you have permanently lost that, that money for taxable income for the county. You're gonna have, y'all, we have an environmentalist here, I'll say it, you lose the land, you lose the beach, you don't have a place for the turtles, and forty-two percent of the turtles are bred out here, I understand, or, or start around here. You don't have birds. So, environmentally, we have had a major loss. Is it popular for me to stand up here? I, by the way, I do not have a dog in this hunt in terms of investment. I'd have no land that would be negatively affected by this. So, this is not anything personal for me. But if you don't allow the county out to advertise for an MSTU, to allow the citizens on the Cape, on peninsula, actually, from the rocks out, to make a decision for themselves, then where's all, where, where are we going? I'm, I'm asking you to keep the door open. You've got about, he said, don't throw out numbers, but I am, you've got about ten million dollars worth of sand that's got to be put out there. And we've looking at all the places to get some of these things from. So, we need to find alternative sources, because the Cape residents don't need to be the burden, have the entire burden on themselves. They need some help from the county, the county's got some, gets some skin in the game in addition to the Cape residents. We find possibility of restore funds. I'm sorry, the first round of restore funds might do a little bit towards our engineering, but we, we're gonna be way out there, and we're gonna have lost property before we really start tapping into these bigger monies for restore. Uh, TDC has you one cent round. That could be, that already is dedicated there. The county's already doing some things, it's just we got to do some more. We're looking at other alternatives. We haven't been sitting on our panties doing nothing. DEP match is thirty-five percent, but there's a couple, two different places that we can have another beach access, and that would move to fifty percent match. It may be in fit us to look at in two places, and we could move to a fifty percent match according to how we structure those, and it, you could do different ones to do different things. Based on what we would have, that would move us to a fifty percent match, or take a million and a half dollars off of what the cost of the county and the residents would have to have come up with. So, we might be able to invest in some property, give more beach accesses, give more thanks for the tourists, and come, and still come out and spending less money ourselves. The state budget would be for the structures, we know they won't put it into the sand this year. Florida Department of Transportation, looking for some money from that. And so, really, what we need for you to do is, is we've got about a hundred and eighty days to try to find something. We've got less than six weeks to legally be able to have an MSTU for the, for the residents to vote on. Hopefully, by that period of time, we could have some of these other pots, and Warren's looked hard, and I know you're looking hard, some of these other pots so that we could bring it down. The MSTU would not be anywhere near the cost of the last one. It would be a fraction of that. So, we need you to allow the advertising to go forward, and somebody find me, somebody that removes tar and feathers, since I'm the one that's suggesting that we might be taxed.
Dr. Hardman? Thank you, thank you.
Any questions?
Uh, yeah, just a continued statement, Mr. Chairman. I think what, what we're trying to get accomplished here today is not to argue the points of whether we need to do this, whether we should do it, or, or what's gonna happen if we do it, or how's the structure's gonna, or, or exactly where all of the money is gonna come from. That's, that's not what we're trying to achieve here, I don't think, today. What we're trying to achieve here today is just an opportunity to move forward, uh, to start the advertising process, so at some point, if we decide this is the route we need to go, is, we've got everything in place, uh, to proceed with that. And I think that's all we're asking, we're not, I'm not asking this board to, to one hundred percent support whatever project we wind up doing. What I'm asking this board to do is to proceed forward, to allow the attorney and the staff to proceed with, with the necessary things, that we can put some things in place so we do have those options. Uh, and Jeremy, you may, uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you, you may want to state what those particular items are, but...
Commissioner Bryan? Just one comment. I, I, I think the only problem, Ms. Pat, I, I think the only problem we're gonna have is selling this throughout the whole county. Now, you know, I, I just wanna throw that out there, I, I, I know what you're coming back with, I hear you, I heard you while I go, but still, again, it does affect the whole county, but we're gonna have a hard time selling it throughout the whole county.
We're not asking for county-wide MSTU.
Maybe I misunderstood you then.
No, sir, I would have liked to have asked for that, but I don't, I agree with you one hundred percent, I don't think I could sell it. I'm asking for an MSTU for the Cape, for the peninsula.
If you, if you people wanna tax yourself down there, I'm with you.
But I want, I want this board to commit to bringing a lot of money to the table to bring down what it takes to tax.
I'm not gonna commit a lot of BP money to throw out there on the Cape. We have other projects throughout the county that has to be done, that we've already got assigned out to do.
Look, I, I'm searching for the money, and, and, and having some success, but we, we're continuing to search for money. I'm not here to tell you, uh, that, that we're gonna find it all through whatever means, but we're searching for the money, we're having some success. All we're asking you to do is, is let us go ahead and proceed with allowing Cape Sand Blast to, to have this vote, let, give us time... Let, give us time as a CCA, as, as the TDC, as the Beach Advisory Committee, to educate the public on what we're trying to do to make sure that we get this thing taken care of, because we can't afford to lose that tax base. We can't afford to lose the, the habitat that we have for all of our endangered species that brings people to our community. What brings people to our community is, is, is the fact that we're not like Bay County, we're not like Destin. We, we are, we're unique, and one of the unique things is we've got habitat for our endangered species. We're trying to maintain that habitat. So I'm not asking you to support any dollar amount right now. What I'm asking to support is give us this option.
I'm good with that. Okay, uh, let me, before I go to the attorney here. Bryan, you and Rick, um, thank you, uh, you very for staying. I hope maybe some points that's been brought out here today will, uh, have some bearing on. It was mentioned in, I don't know, a few meetings back, uh, maybe hindsight's 2020, I'm glad it's not there this week, so, but one of the question was, well, maybe we should have kept our, you and, should have, but that's, mistakes is how you learn. We should, then we'd have us a little nest egg, help us, you know, instead of hitting us with a balloon payment. Could have been putting a little in the cookie jar all along, but that's, that's hindsight. We've got to, maybe these would, uh, they very know can get out here and help us, because we're just a little 13,000 population county, oh, 365. Now, we do have this big influx of people that come in here. That's a major job out here we're talking about, we're talking about. We could have got, if we'd had a lot more wave damage last night, we could have had some, as has been said in the past, wintertime is worse on our beaches than summertime. We could have really got a hard lick last night, but hopefully we didn't lose too much. All right, Mr. Attorney?
Commissioners, if there's no other public comment.
Is there, you want to go to the public now?
If, we can pose the question after you have your public comment, sir. It'd probably be the most appropriate time to do it.
All right, if you have any on this, very important, is any public comment? One more time, any public comment?
I would like to make a comment.
All right, sir, come on up, sir, and state your name and.
My name's Lloyd Klein, and I like to sweat off my palms, because I'm not used to appearing in front of a panel like this. Okay? I'm a landowner out at Cape by halfway between the rock wall and scallop cove. Once I found out the agenda of this meeting, I decided I was going to return and be here. And I'm just wondering, since the agenda was fashioned, how many of you have been out to the Cape to look at the erosion?
A hundred.
Okay? Since, that's great, I appreciate that. Michael will disagree with me, but the last addition of the rock wall is creating more erosion, and I can tell you I've replaced more steps to the beach at my house in the last six months than I had the previous two and a half years. And Isaac even came along during that period of time and did some erosion. I'm not going to tell you what the financial repercussions of the Cape is. I do know if it blows away, you won't have to worry about South County Fire Department, that's taken care of. But I know it's a financial obligation. Once lived in a town called St. Louis, Missouri, and ever tried to get a professional football team, and they were arguing against the cost of it. Well, they finally got it, but part of the selling point was it's a ripple effect. Visitors come to town, they spend money, they go to the games, and the whole city and the whole St. Louis county benefited from that. The same thing is true out at the Cape. 15, 20,000 people, my house sleeps 16. Okay? I'm a resident eight months out of the year. I go back to Louisville, Kentucky for the summer months so I can make some money, but the other eight months of the year, I'm here. So that, knowing the rental money, you're taxing the appraised value, but the rental money's coming in, these people are paying rent, good rent, they're coming into town, they're eating lunch, they're drinking beer, they're doing this, and hopefully they'll pay a mission, go to the lighthouse, which should still be out on the Cape, but that's beside the point. And it's a ripple effect. You save 13,000 county, and you want to talk about weed wall. Your money is right out there. That's where your money's at, and if you don't protect it, yeah, I'll lose my home big deal. You know, I'll move on, I'm older than 55, so it doesn't really matter. But your money is out there. Your existence, you know, we're known as nicknamed Forgotten Coast. Without that Cape, there won't be a nickname. You'll be the Forgotten Coast. It's that simple, guys. You can banner back and forth. I don't speak for any other landowner, other myself, but that's, out there is your goose, the Cape is a goose, the homes are your golden egg. Now, what you want to do about it, you're going to do. And I don't care about Mother Nature and all this stuff. Yeah, you can't stop Mother Nature, but you can sure as H. slow her down. That's why I, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Bill, you still around?
Hi, darling, I'm still. Amazing. I'm still walking, dude.
Come on up.
My name's Bill McGee, I live out on Cape San Blas, and I'd like to key on something that Chairman McDaniel just said. In your comments to Dr. Pat, you said, well, maybe if we had a little reserve, a little reserve of money that you could help out with. My feeling is that it's time, and probably past time, for the county to take responsibility for the peninsula of Cape San Blas, just like they take care of everybody else. We're part of this county, don't treat us separately. This problem of beach erosion is not going to go away. We're going to have to deal with it year after year after year. If we could do something about Mother Nature, those comments says, hey, that'd be great, but we don't know what to do. So I would like the board to start considering setting aside money every year to take care of this contingency, which we know is going to happen. Let's not make a crisis out of it every four or five years. Let's set up a fund, build it up. By the time that six-year rolls around, you're going to have some money in the bank. Difficulty, obviously, Mr. McDaniel is, you're going to have to ask people to put more money on the line to do it. The money isn't going to magically appear. You've got a growing county, you've got a, a big TDC, you've got people coming in, it takes money to, to run that kind of an organization. You want a good reputation with the public, you're going to have to pay for it. And that may mean some people in the northern part of the county or other places are going to have to chip in a little bit. Like the other gentleman said, we will, and other places certainly get benefit from the dollars that are brought in out there. So please consider a budget item for restoration and nourishment of the Cape each and every year. Please, thank you.
You want to go? You want to go? All right, direct over to the attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, the questions will be twofold. I guess the second question would be conditioned on the answer to the first. As we've discussed the last couple of months and building up to it, in your public comments over the last few meetings, Florida statute 125 affords you all the authority or the ability to institute a taxing unit in Gulf County, one of three ways. One is through a petition of the community. The second would be through an affirmative action through U5 board members, and the third would be to place it on a referendum of the community, either in countywide or a special taxing district that would be defined by the administration office, my office, and the supervisor of elections office. You've done it historically in the past, as you have heard and all voted if you were a commissioner in 2007, and it would be for your consideration again. The third option that you've all discussed today on the Florida statute 106 is to place it on a referendum, set a date with the supervisor of elections office. The language for the ballot question would be crafted, would be ratified, and then it would be put out to the special taxing district, given the opportunity to whether to vote on that issue or not. As I mentioned earlier, under the Florida statute, we have the ability to do that. If you also instruct us to do it, we will publicly advertise in four consecutive weeks. Depending on the publication dates, we would shoot for your February 10th meeting to have that public hearing. At that meeting, we would introduce a resolution, and based on that, then I can go into the additional questions I have for you. The notice with the title, if you will, that would be posed before you all would be a resolution of Gulf County electing to consider for adoption an instituted municipal services taxing unit, an MSTU, and use the uniform method of collecting for beach nourishment services and facility tax assessments levied within a defined area of the county, stating a need for such a levy, providing for the mailing of this resolution, providing for modifications that may arise from consideration at that public hearing, and also providing for a, an effective date. If you all authorized us to move forward, we will advertise that, we will schedule a public hearing in February, and at that hearing, it would be our goal not only to consider the resolution, but the other item on your agenda today was simply beach nourishment, not only MSTU for the special taxing district. You heard Dr. Hardman indicate earlier, there's a lot of defined deadlines, if you will, 190 days, I believe she indicated. Needless to say, after the new year started, that window of time is shrinking with regards to DEP contribution. So what we would hope to do during that public hearing as well is, based on the commission's final vote, to place on a referendum, would also be to structure an outline or a timeline, if you will, of some other issues. We have seven different topics that we could possibly discuss during that public hearing. You've heard them today from Commissioner Jaeger and some of the other commissioners in the public, running down some other parallel paths. So that would be part of that public hearing to hopefully place on the agenda. Consider that resolution for the MSTU, but also then structure a timeline over the next four months of some tasks to be accomplished and other avenues to explore. Commissioners, if you would, I'd ask for your vote with regards to advertising the resolution and the notice of intent to consider at a public hearing in February.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, to proceed with that process. All right, motion by Commissioner Jaeger.
And again, this is just to give us the opportunity, kind.
Second?
Second? This is strictly for Mr. Attorney. ST, appetized, I have the meeting for, and it's strictly for Cape San Blas. I want it cleared to everybody.
Both those statements are accurate, sir.
All right. Other board, amongst the audience, amongst the audience, doc, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jaeger, thing by Commissioner Bryan, is in opposition to Mr. Jaeger's motion. Doc, the motion passed 5-0. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the second part of that will be during that public hearing, there is specific figures and data that will be presented to you during that public hearing, so that both you as a commission and the public have that for your consideration. As close as estimates can be to costs, the issue of bonding, and the various other questions, presumably from the public, I believe that data's going to try to be secured in obviously the coming month, so as much that's available will be provided to you all for your consideration before it's put out on that referendum, if you decide to do so. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Other before the board. For Wade John, I want to thank everyone taking time to come out, it's very important, important. Here, can I say, trip home, I need a good, I need a, a most good year.